Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Brunswick County Board of Education meeting for May 2021. We will begin tonight with the moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance allowed by Mr. Benton. Please stand. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda tonight is the board salute. Mr. Siemens.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Happy Tuesday. I come bearing all kinds of positive news. And we begin with an NC school hero. The North Carolina Education Lottery began a couple of years ago recognizing some of our school employees. They, doesn't necessarily have to be a teacher, it can be anybody who works in the, in the school community. It's a nomination process, and it is designed to showcase the positive impacts that school employees have in public schools every day. This year, more than 4,900 parents, school staff, and community members submitted more than 4,900 nominations, and 10 people across the state of North Carolina received the actual honor to be called an NC Education School, NC Education Lottery School Hero. One of those 10 is a Brunswick County Schools employee, specifically at West Brunswick High School. It is my honor to bring up First Sergeant Jeff Clendenon, JROTC instructor for the Trojans, for a little extra additional recognition. First Sergeant, would you please join us? First and foremost, everyone wants to know, what did it feel like when you found out you had been nominated and won this, this NC School Hero honor?
I was very surprised. I knew that a lot of people from, like Charlotte, Mackenberg, and places like that, they had like 15,000 followers on Facebook, and the community support, both in Brunswick and where I taught prior, I had a lot of votes there, and it humbled me greatly.
You are well-known across North Carolina, principal of schools. I brought your school administrator here because if anyone knows about some of the amazing things that you do, it would be the principal. Would you like to speak about this wonderful man?
Yeah, I'd love to take a moment. This is more than an honor, especially during Teacher Appreciation Week, to be able to appreciate all of our faculty this, this week. But to be able to stand here and show appreciation for you, First Sergeant, means more than you can imagine. Truly, since I've, I've known him, he has been a mentor to our students. He's made sure that they've, they know exactly what it would take either to go into the military or to be a leader in whatever field they choose next. He takes pride in that. He talks about our kids on a regular basis, and they talk about him. Not only that, you can tell the biggest testament of any educator is when those students come back, and they come back a lot to see First Sergeant. And we know that that's a true testament of, of his effect and reach through the years. So, once more, not just a thank you for being a North Carolina hero, a North Carolina educator, but also a veteran. 23 years, correct? He spent 23 years. He is a veteran, and I think we all owe him a huge round of applause for that as well.
Certificate of appreciation, also for winning the honor, $10,000 in, in cash to spend as you will, and then the Trojans get an additional $10,000. Any idea what you're gonna use it for?
He can certainly tell you what he's gonna use this for, I'm sure. The school actually, since it is First Sergeant, we've made sure that the JRTC program gets to decide that, so they're making sure that all the money goes back to our JRTC program. And they are already in full effect, making sure that we're putting that to use this year. So, thanks.
All right. First Sergeant, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're up next, Mr. Siemens.
We're going to, we're going to continue the whole idea of Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. We changed it up a little bit this year. In years past, on one day, usually beginning of May, we would announce all the school employees of the year from the individual schools at one time, send out a, you know, a blast to the media, and on our, you know, our communication platforms. This year, we decided, let's change it up a little bit. Let's switch it. Since we are taking a week to celebrate and appreciate our school employees, let's switch it up, and let's individually celebrate our school, 2021-2022 School Employees of the Year. And so, we, on Monday, we started on our social media pages, and we're posting throughout the day. And the idea here is to not only announce the, the winners, but to also, on our social media platforms, it gives a great spot for people they've impacted to chime in and tell stories. So, we encourage anybody who's watching the livestream right now to go to our Facebook page. If you see somebody who's impacted you, leave them a little note. They read it. But we want to, to roll through our announcements, our, our Individual Employees of the Year at the school level. What you'll see on these, on these slides are words from their colleagues as well. We're not gonna read those. Those are something you can go check out on the, on our social media sites, as well as at the end of the week, we'll post this entire presentation for folks who maybe don't use social media. They can go to the internet, download the presentation, and check it out. First up, Belleville Elementary's Home of the Shark, the Teacher of the Year for 2021-22 is Danielle Platt, and the Instructional Assistant of the Year is Christina Ott. At Bolivia Elementary, the Teacher of the Year for the Home of the Bears is Miriam Viegas. The Instructional Assistant of the Year, Lisa Allen. At Jesse Mae Monroe Elementary, Christina Smith is the Teacher of the Year for the Home of the Patriots. Victoria Fisher is the Rookie of the Year. At Lincoln Elementary, Home of the Leopards, the Teacher of the Year, Melanie Sizemore. The Rookie of the Year, Rebecca Lloyd. And again, as you can see to the side of these, there are, there are comments from various colleagues at their school. They are very interesting and, and make you feel good about who's in our school when you go and read some of these words. And then the Instructional Assistant of the Year for Lincoln Elementary is Clarice Mosley. At Southport Elementary, the Teacher of the Year is Amy Cleaver. The Rookie of the Year, Rachel Billups. The Instructional Assistant of the Year, Kristy Bennett. Home of the Dolphins, can't leave that out. At Supply Elementary, Home of the Starfish, the Teacher of the Year is Pamela Nardozzi. The Rookie of the Year, Mariah Franklin. The Instructional Assistant of the Year, Deana Hooks. Town Creek Elementary, Home of the Gators, the Teacher of the Year, Callan Simpson. The Rookie of the Year, Autumn Harder. The Instructional Assistant of the Year, Shamika Jacobs. At Union Elementary, Home of the Dolphins, Teacher of the Year, Holly Needham. Instructional Assistant of the Year, Barbara Williams Cogdell. At Virginia Williamson Elementary, Home of the Stingrays, we have Christina Harden, the 2021-22 Teacher of the Year. Madison Wooton, the Rookie of the Year. And Kimberly Phelps, the Instructional Assistant of the Year. At Shiloh Middle School, Home of the Pirates, we have the Teacher of the Year, Joey Bullock. The Rookie of the Year, Megan Stiller. The Instructional Assistant of the Year, Emma Spidey. At Cedar Grove Middle School, Home of the Bull Dogs, we have the Teacher of the Year, Betsy O'Hara, also our district Remote Teacher of the Year. And Southeast Alliance did name her the Regional Hybrid Remote Teacher of the Year. That is out of 14 other schools in our region. She obviously knows what she's doing when it comes to that remote learning. Cedar Grove Middle School's Instructional Assistant of the Year, Barbara Vickery. South Brunswick Middle's, the Home of the Cougars, Teacher of the Year, Jenna Henson-Corley. The Instructional Assistant of the Year, Joy Hutchinson. Leland Middle School's, Home of the Tigers, Teacher of the Year, Catherine Pender. And I know I said I wouldn't read any of these, because I want everybody to check out these words, but I want to, we gotta point something out. This is, this is something that just moved me. I hope it moves you. Her advice for this crazy year, so this is a quote from her, "Don't close the door on anything we've been through. Let's learn from this and move forward and make it as positive as we can. There's always something positive. Think about how great next year can be with everything we've learned this year. When you come out of something that hard, you can either let it break you or teach you." That line right there. Think about how great next year can be with everything we've learned this year. That should be a banner, a motto in the skyline. Leland Middle School's Instructional Assistant of the Year with a smile that'll light the room up, that is Shannon McDonald. Town Creek Middle School, Home of the Coyotes, Teacher of the Year, the first Teacher of the Year for this school, might we add, Brooks Wilson. And the Instructional Assistant of the Year, Douglas Skipper. Walker Mall School, Home of the Eagles, 2021-22 Teacher of the Year is Leslie Rayner. The Rookie of the Year, Taylor Madison. And Instructional Assistant of the Year, Penny McKeith. Now to the Coast, the Center of Applied Sciences and Technology, the Teacher of the Year, Leanne Bové. And Rookie of the Year, Denise Marie Copeland. At Early College High School, the Teacher of the Year for the Firebirds, Dr. Dane Fisher. And the Rookie of the Year, Meg Smith. North Brunswick High School, Home of the Scorpions, the Teacher of the Year, Tracy Weigold. The Rookie of the Year, Cheyenne Simmons. And Instructional Assistant of the Year, Tommy Christensen. South Brunswick High, Home of the Cougars, 2021-22 Teacher of the Year, Robin Ventamilia. West Brunswick High School, Home of the Trojans, 2021-22 Teacher of the Year, Leslie Reeves. Rookie of the Year, Maya Morse. And Instructional Assistant of the Year, Tamara Hill. We will celebrate all of these, these employees, and if this is just the announcement, in a bigger fashion, this fall, and also this fall, we will be announcing our special district awards. These are some of those folks behind the scenes, and we want to make sure that they are honored as well. Here are our finalists, three. These were nominated by colleagues through a one-month period, where they go online and they, they nominate who they think should be. And there are three categories. The first one right there is the Brunswick County School Instructional Support Employee of the Year. They don't know it. They'll know it tomorrow. I'll email them and let them know, but unless they're, if they're not watching right now, this is the first we've mentioned it. Angelique Meyer, Behavior Specialist, Belleville Elementary and Lila Middle School. Nathan Bell, Guidance Counselor, West Brunswick High School. And Christina Lazari Oliver, Guidance Counselor, North Brunswick High School. The District Administrative Support Employee of the Year district finalists are Danielle Brown, Data Manager for the Coast; Tanya Simpson, Administrative Assistant at West Brunswick High School; and Lydia Swake, Administrative Assistant at Jesse Mae Monroe Elementary. And then our District Operations Support Employee of the Year finalist are Janice Vault, Head Custodian, Cedar Grove Middle School; David Hoover, Coordinator, Transportation; and Terry Montgomery, Head Custodian at West Brunswick High School. I can tell you, when we were trying to get these down to the top three finalists, there are, sometimes you, you run into a spot where you're like, can't they all just win? And that's a good spot to be in. We will narrow it down somehow this fall when we announce the, the winners. But that, those are your 2021-22 Employees of the Year for Brunswick County Schools, and we will be posting all of these on the district website on Friday, but we wanted to kinda do a little more individualism this week, so everybody, we're only two days into it, we've got three more good days to go. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Siemens. At this time, we have the Teacher's Voice with our Brunswick County Teacher of the Year, Jenny Bryan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To all of my Brunswick County School colleagues and teacher friends, I want to wish a very, very happy Teacher Appreciation Week, and also extend my congratulations to the winners that were just announced, and say that I'm excited for the year of leadership that you have ahead of you, and the opportunity that you have to speak on behalf of your colleagues and on behalf of this great profession. So, one of the many great opportunities I've had this year as Brunswick County Schools Teacher of the Year is to meet with and speak with so many of our fantastic educators in this district. I've been able to catch glimpses into classrooms that I otherwise would not have had the chance to do. I've been encouraged and inspired all along the way by their resiliency, their innovation, their compassion, and their commitment to their students. And it's been my privilege to introduce you all to just a few of these outstanding educators to you each month through our Teacher Voice Spotlight videos. Tonight, we head over to Lincoln Elementary School, and you're going to get to meet Mr. Drew DiMaggio, the fourth and fifth grade AIG math teacher. Mr. DiMaggio gets it. He understands that there's more to his job than teaching students numbers and figures. You'll hear him describe the social-emotional learning focus and resources he has used this year, and how he creates a safe space for all of his students, and lets them know that it's okay to make mistakes as well and to learn from them.
At the start of the year, starting with students that I never actually got to meet in person was a new challenge. At Lincoln, we used a resource, Sanford Harmony. It's a, it's a great resource. It's got in-depth units, broken down into different aspects of social and emotional learning, and that was, I think, it was very successful in starting to build that community and build positive relationships between me and the students and between the, the students themselves. I think that something that was a focus for my classroom, especially my fifth graders this year, was, we were really focused on communication. So, this year proved to be incredibly turbulent and divisive, both politically and socially. My AIG students, especially my fifth graders, had very strong opinions about this year's protests, the election, local, state, and federal mandates relating to COVID precautions and restrictions. They had a lot of very strong opinions, and those conversations obviously, you know, came into the classroom. And so, I noticed that students are having a hard time disagreeing without, you know, disagreeing and still remaining respectful. And so, that really became a big focus in my classroom in terms of having discussions and disagreeing on things, but being able to do so respectfully, calmly, calmly, and thoughtfully. Another thing that I think really helps with those communication skills and being able to receive criticism, receive feedback, is in my, my number routines, every day in math, we do something called a number routine, and it's usually an open-ended problem. And oftentimes, students are asked to, you know, call back to the standards for mathematical practices, they're asked to construct viable arguments, and they have to present their answer. And then other students are not just welcomed to, but encouraged to critique the reasoning. And if they disagree or if they think it's incorrect, then they present their argument. And I think that that's a great way to just develop that skill of, it's okay to be wrong, it's okay to disagree, and just being able to communicate that in a healthy way. I think something that's instrumental in my, my, in my classroom community, and in students feeling safe and welcome and feeling like it's okay to make mistakes, is making myself vulnerable and highlighting my own mistakes and, you know, apologizing because I'm not perfect, and letting them know that they don't have to be either. I think especially in an AIG class, there are students that are, they're not used to getting things wrong, they're not used to making mistakes, and it's my job to challenge them. And they're not, nothing is supposed to come easy to them in my classroom. They're in my classroom because they need to be challenged, and that's what I aim to do. And so, as I'm pulling them through that process of being challenged, and, you know, it's okay to make mistakes and feel stuck, even if it's been a while since you felt that way, I think, I think it's really important to model being okay with making mistakes and being vulnerable and being silly in front of people and letting them know it's okay to do that too and take chances. And that's just, that's a big, that's a thing that I really believe in, and I think it goes a long way with my students.
So, before I sit down, I just want to share a few more reflections on my time as Brunswick County Schools Teacher of the Year. Let me change this. So, tonight is my, my last opportunity to address you all as the Brunswick County Schools 2020-2021 Teacher of the Year. And next Thursday will be our final TAC meeting of the year. And during that meeting, I will be sure to express my gratitude for the contributions of all of the 2020-2021 Teachers of the Year, and, and thank them for what we've been able to accomplish this year. But tonight, I really want to thank those of you who are sitting here in front of me. And I want to thank you for your support and your commitment to our TAC program. Dr. Oates, members of the cabinet. Thank you so much for listening, for always attending our meetings, for fielding our questions, whether in the meetings or through email or telephone. And in the year that we've had, there's been a lot of questions and concerns. So, I thank you for your willingness to dialogue with us in meaningful and productive ways. To Danielle and to Molly, thank you, thank you, thank you. Your support, encouragement, and simply availability to me over the past several months has been invaluable. In my first address to the board, I invited you all to seek out, listen to, and promote the Teacher Voice. Having board members now regularly in our schools, talking to teachers and students, and now regularly attend our TAC meetings speaks volumes about your commitment to do just that, and for that, I thank you. I implore both the cabinet and the school board to continue to provide a seat at the table for the Teacher's Voice and to promote teacher leadership in this district. That is the best teacher appreciation gift any of us could receive. My Regional Teacher of the Year colleagues are in awe and envious of the Teacher of the Year and TAC model that we have here in Brunswick County. As I transition into my role as the Southeast Regional Teacher of the Year, one of my goals will be to support other districts and our region in developing their own TACs. As we like to say at South Brunswick High School, when it comes to promoting Teacher Voice, Brunswick County Schools sets the standard. I am brimming with ideas on how we can continue to support and develop our teacher leaders in this county, and I look forward to working with the next Brunswick County Schools Teacher of the Year to continue the good and important work of the Teacher Advisory Council. Thank you.
Ms. Bryan, you've been, you've been a wonderful representative for Brunswick County Schools and, of course, for all the teachers. And I know Dr. Oates has gone to you a number of times and asked your opinion to different things that's going on in the school system. So, you've been quite a resource for all of us, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
It is now time to approve the meeting agenda. And do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add recognition of the South Brunswick High School Women's Soccer Team to discussion.
Does anybody have any problems with that?
If, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add the vaccine, the COVID vaccines in the high schools as well as a discussion item. And if we could also add the social studies standards as well as a discussion item.
Does anybody have any problems adding the social studies standards and the vaccines in addition to the ladies soccer team at South Brunswick?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agenda by Mr. Benton with the added items, seconded by Mr. Robinson. All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Barger.
I seconded it.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Seconded by Mr. Barger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The agenda is now set. You have, board members, you have the minutes for the regular meeting, April 13, and the committee meetings on April 20. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions needed? If not, can maybe have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion to approve of Mr. Barger, seconded by Mr. Robinson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. So, the minutes are approved. We have a long list of consent items that were discussed at committee for approval. I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Consent items are, the motion to approve consent items by Mr. Barger, seconded by Ms. Moffett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent items are approved. Action items. Who is doing that? Oh. Mr. Foster?
Yes, just as a continuation of-
Yes, just as a continuation of our discussion on the committee meeting, there was a recommendation to continue the signing bonuses for math teachers, EC teachers, and CTE construction teachers. The recommend, the only recommended change to it was that instead of paying a full $5,000 signing bonus, would be to pay $1,000 upfront and then pay the remaining $4,400 increments over the remaining 10 months in our ass for you guys, for the board to approve that so that we could start advertising that with our vacancies for next year.
We've discussed this item several times. Is there any other discussion of this item?
Mr. Foster, is that sufficient?
Enough to attract the candidates we need for math, especially for high school?
I do think that it is an attractive offer, especially with the increase that you have supported in the teacher supplements overall. It is a competitive supplement, and that additional may get people to make the move to a different district where they would not in other situations.
How many positions do we currently have available in those areas?
I can look it up real quick. I apologize.
Mr. Foster?
I should have done it in my home room.
My question to you is, what has been the success in this program since we instituted it a couple of months ago?
Yeah, so that was part of the original presentation that we had, it was limited to a few situations that we actually provided that bonus. And of the, I think it was five that we gave. And you reported to us.
Right.
Four, three EC teachers and one CTE construction teacher. Two of the EC teachers did not continue with us, and two of the one EC teacher and one CTE construction teacher are still with us. And I do think that, that originally the incentive was established because we were bringing all the students back. It was mid-year. We were trying to incentivize teachers to come to us in the middle of the year. I do think that it will be more successful. Teachers are more likely, and in a, in a, in a sense, it's part of their professional integrity that they want to stay with their students through their current school year. So I think that it would be more successful at the beginning of the school year for teachers who might consider moving from another district to us for that additional incentive.
Well, and I see we have a number of math openings in the system right now.
Yes, sir.
So.
And we have done some, we've done, we've hired a few already for next year, and you'll see some of those on the personnel list tonight. And we have others that we recruited to the pool. I think it's just a matter of getting the commitments from them to move forward.
So if this is approved tonight, who will qualify? Anybody who has not been hired at this point?
What I would recommend is that anybody who is hired into a position beginning next school year, whether they have already, it's already in the process or not, I would recommend that we provide that incentive to them. Although you could argue that the incentive wasn't necessary if they've already signed, but I would say that it would be equitable and favorable to them, but I would recommend that.
Any other questions for Mr. Foster?
So the $5,000, I just want to declare, is enough for you to be able to fill all of these math positions, especially that we're going to need?
It will certainly help, and we will do everything in our power to fill those positions. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
So staff has recommended this item, is that we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
We have a motion to approve this item by Mr. Berger, seconded by Mr. Robinson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that item is approved. We're down to discussion items, and the first item on here is the June meeting has been moved to June 8th based on, we have a graduation that day, so. And the items that were added, I'll just do these in the order I wrote them down. Social studies standards. Who was going to speak to that? Ms. Moffett?
We just wanted to make parents aware that the new social studies standards have been added to the website so that they can review them. There have been some changes, and we wanted to give them time to be informed and to read the new standards that are coming this fall. They were voted on February 4th. The State Board of Education passed those standards. So it's not a local decision, it's a state decision. So we just want to put that out there so that parents can inform themselves of the new changes and what's coming. I know there's some hesitancy about the new standards. Some of them raise a little bit of red flags for parents. I've had some parents reach out to me. So we just want to make parents aware to be informed of what's coming.
Dr. Oates, I may have mentioned this to you before. I did notice on another school systems website, a full listing of all the changes and where they're located and what subject area and.
We now have, we now have that on our website.
Okay.
So we can provide that information to our parents as well. There's a listing to the entire social studies, all of the standards, and also it pretty much spells out the changes that took place in the standards. So parents will be able to see everything that is proposed to be implemented next year.
Is that what you were referring to, Ms. Moffett?
Yes, just the differences and the changes that are coming.
And maybe Ms. Bryan will be willing to come back and go over each one of those for us at some point soon, so we are better informed also. Because that document points it out very vividly of where they are and the actual change.
I think there's a lot of, I got a couple of calls this week as well. I think, I think there's a lot of worry on how they're going to be implemented as well. And I think Dr. Oates could probably speak to it because he was a longtime history teacher and could maybe speak to how, they're worried about indoctrination. A lot of parents have called, a lot of community members, which is, you know, and I told them, rest at ease, you know, we are on this, and I believe we have a policy in place or a procedure already about that. If you could speak to that, Dr. Oates?
Well, it's been a long time since I taught history. I might not have been a long time history teacher. There's a difference there. But to, to answer your question, yes, we, as we roll out the standards, we'll get a, what's called typically an unpacking documents from the state, which will give information as to how to successfully teach the standards. But the policy you refer to in teachings and the policies you refer to in making sure the opinions of our teachers are not pushed upon our students is policy 7720. And I would encourage anyone who is unfamiliar with that policy to simply go to our website and read that. It still allows for discussion of topics that are within the standards, but with that, both sides of any argument would have to be presented according to the policy. But we are making sure that our teachers keep their personal opinions, their personal convictions to themselves. Our job as educators is to simply teach the standards and teach what's fact and allow students and their parents to make opinions based on what is taught to them.
Thank you. I, I think that'll help a lot of the public out here who've reached out and they just have concerns, and I think that rests it very well. Thank you.
Any other comments? The next item is the South Brunswick High School Ladies Soccer Team. Mr. Berger?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to take a moment to recognize the women's soccer team at South Brunswick High School who made it to the state playoffs. Unfortunately, they lost last night, but they entered the playoffs as a ninth seed, and I wanted to make sure that we recognized the Lady Cougars as they made the playoffs for women's soccer this year, so. Just give them a round of applause.
Yeah.
And that's all I have.
I see you wearing your South Brunswick gait, O'Shea.
I am wearing my South Brunswick mask. I see Mr. Pascal's in the back there. Hopefully, he doesn't get mad at me.
And the next item, I believe Mr. Benton was going to speak to, has to do with the vaccines that have been offered for 16 and up in schools this week.
Correct. I, I have concerns over Health Department doing this during, while the children are in our custody during the day. I, I don't think that a experimental vaccine should be, we should be involved with that happening in our buildings. If they want to use our buildings after or weekends, I'm fine with it. I mean, everybody has their own choice. I was vaccinated, but I believe that, you know, we're talking about a non-approved product here, and I just have reservations about that being done in our care, whether a, you know, consent form is filled out by the parent or if a child filled it out, or, you know, none of those things are, are going to be investigated, obviously, because we're just providing a facility for that at this point, but they are in our custody during that time, and I just have some concerns on that and would just like to not have that occur during our school day if possible.
Dr. Oates, are these vaccinations mandatory?
No, they're not mandatory.
Do we still get flu vaccines in our schools?
Yes.
Mr. Green, have you had a chance to look over this agreement from the Health Department in the school system?
No, sir. I haven't. I haven't sent it. Probably, I was just saying yesterday, I did not send it to Mr. Green to check out, being that none of our school employees are implementing or doing any of the vaccine. It's all Health Department employees.
I'll look at it tomorrow.
If you wouldn't mind if you could send it over to our legal counsel, I believe that's probably paid him, and he can determine what our liability is, I believe.
I think another thing to note, too, is there's a lot of exams going on, like AP testing, and of course, coming up. So I know some people that have taken the vaccinations feel pretty cruddy after they take them, so I wouldn't want that with our students during this month of testing, since we don't know about adverse reactions. So that would be a concern of mine, too, as far as the rollout of the timeline for the kids.
I agree. I don't want to see no additional instructional time lost, especially with the possibility of there being an issue.
I'd like to make a motion. We don't permit this to happen. I mean, we've had two days' notice on this event to happen. Our attorney hasn't reviewed any documents. We're not even sure on this, and it doesn't, you know, a two-day, I think a two-day notice on an event like this hasn't given us the time to do what we need to do to allow these events to happen.
Dr. Oates, what was the date of this?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at now.
It's the state of South Brunswick, I believe.
Yeah.
Our, 12.
Is it 12? Yours is the 12th? Yes.
Early College, May 20th. North Brunswick High School, May 12. South Brunswick High School, May 6. West Brunswick High School, May 10.
So that's two days.
So for me personally, after Mr. Green reviews it, then we are not legally in any binding situation. I know the 6th is right around the corner. Maybe that, I would like for, if Dr. Oates, if you would look at it again and let us know whether we should.
And let me just add, I think these dates, if I'm not mistaken, just let me know, were dates that were coordinated by the Health Department, their availability and those types of things. So if the board did decide to allow this to take place, I'm sure that the dates that are set now could be altered. It's just a matter of contacting the Health Department. So, and none of the dates, what I'm saying, are set in stone, I would say.
They are, sir. I said they're not.
They're not.
And it may be that Mr. Robinson has the best idea to them at 3:30. So of those who choose to do it, so, so I don't know if, let them relook at it, Mr. Benton, and move from there.
So are we going to allow them to?
No, right now, we were saying we want to postpone it.
Our next meeting, when we can discuss this further?
Our next meeting is the 19th, or the 18th.
Our committee meeting?
Our committee meeting is the 18th.
That's after three of the sessions. So we're going to approve it or deny it tonight? I would agree with Mr. Robinson and make a conditional approval to do it after school if Mr. Green looks at the liability and approves it.
I'm opposed to doing it all while they're in our care. If they want to do it after school, as in not, while we have custodial custody of the children, that would be fine with me, but I don't want to have them in our custody, which I believe ends when we drop them off. So I don't want to have them in our custody having this done. I mean, we're not talking, and I support, like I said, vaccinations, but it's, this is an experimental thing, and I don't feel comfortable with us having them in our custody at that time. But I, I would like to make a motion that we deny the use of the facility until we've further reviewed the documents.
I think we should also think ahead about athletes getting vaccinated, too. I mean, I don't want anything to happen on a student in the afternoon or the next day. I mean, because of a reaction, I mean, we just don't know.
But it's foreign, though.
Yeah, it is, it is. But you still, you know, with them being in our care, it's just a little concerning for me.
I'm going to second Mr. Benton's motion.
Re-quote it, please.
I make a motion that we not allow vaccinations until we've had Mr. Green review the documents and we've discussed it again at the next board meeting.
Okay, we had Mr. Benton's motion, seconded by Mr. Robinson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
I'm also opposed. So that passes 3-2. Okay, next item is going to close session. If we can have a motion?
So might we do that?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of announcements I'd like to make.
Okay.
Today, I received notification from the state regarding one of our teachers at Union Elementary. I haven't even told Daniel this, so he can put it out, but her principal is aware. Polly Westfall, she's been named one of six finalists for the Presidential Awards for the Teaching of Math and Science. She will be, the person will be chosen on May 13th at the next State Board of Education meeting in Raleigh, and again, she's from Union Elementary. And I also like to take this opportunity to commend our chief financial officer, Ms. Freya Cahill, and received a letter that says, "On behalf of the Association of School Business Officials International, I am pleased to inform you that Brunswick County Board of Education has received the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the fiscal year ended 2020. Congratulations to you and the members of your staff who worked so hard to earn this certificate of excellence this year, and we look forward to your continued participation in the program." So once again, the Finance Department of Brunswick County Schools has brought home yet another certificate of excellence.
You're going to have to buy. You're going to have to buy her a bigger trophy case.
Yes, we do. We really do.
As well as congratulations to Ms. Westfall.
Yes. So.
I would not want Ms. Cahill's job. You're doing great, Dr.
Okay, now, can we have a motion to go to close, please?
Some of them.
Mr. Biden makes a motion to go to close session. We have a second. Mr. Benton seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.